All right, we will now call the meeting to order. The November Board Meeting. And if you'd all, a roll call, please, Dr. Abbott.
Mr. Nicrom.
Here.
Mr. Paul.
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Here.
Mrs. Sneeden.
Here.
Mr. Chaney.
Here. All right, if you'll all join me, stand for a Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Each meeting, we read the mission statement of the School District of Fort Atkinson. That is what, why we're here and why we do this. "The School District of Fort Atkinson is committed to delivering the quality opportunities and services each student needs to achieve his or her academic and personal potential." All right, with the mission statement read, we will now turn it over to Dr. Abbott for the recognition of Luther Art Gallery students and staff.
Yes, I think as our board members and administrators here, as well as some of our viewing audience, you'd remember that periodically throughout the year, we're frantically putting up chairs at the last second because the art show that our art department, art teachers, K-12 put on here at Luther, our orchestra plays, we have food brought in by the high school food service students, and the list goes on. So like so many things during this time, we are doing things a little bit differently. But I'm really excited that the initiative was brought forward to do it in video form for us, to show us that indeed, art is alive and well in our K-12 schools. So with that, I think Mrs. Belzer does the introduction of the video, and we'll take it from there.
Hello, my name is Suzie Belzer. I'm the Rockwell art teacher. And tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing our first quarter art show. Our team typically holds the Luther Gallery art show during this time of the year. And in lieu of that, each of our eight educators have chosen eight student artists to feature in this video. Our teachers and students are working and creating in these unique and challenging times. Like most teachers right now, we had our concerns that our students' artwork is not up to the high quality that we're used to expecting. But as I sorted through these 64 pieces of artwork, I was profoundly moved and impressed by what our students have accomplished. In these times of uncertainty, art has been an escape for some. And for others, it serves as a conduit to express those complex emotions that go along with our current situation. It can provide a sense of control in chaos, a sense of empowerment when you may feel helpless, and it can give you wings when you need lifted. I hope you enjoy this wonderful peek into what our students are capable of.
Well, that was a great little video by Mrs. Belzer. It's so cool to see all those different mediums. You know, crayons, I was always like, that's what we all should have, just crayons. But forget about digital media and metal and...
Does a great job of showing the depth and breadth of our programming, that's for sure.
Yeah, makes it proud.
Great stuff.
That was really cool.
All right. We will now move ahead to comments from the audience on agenda and non-agenda items. If you, if there are any folks here who would like to make a comment, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address, and try to keep it to a three-minute time limit, please. Seeing nobody in here, we will go ahead and Dr. Abbott can read some of the comments that we've received.
Yes, the first is from Ron Martin at 409 Natick Drive in Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin. "My name is Ron Martin. I live, have lived in Fort Atkinson for 28 years. Our two children went through the Fort Atkinson schools and graduated within the last 10 years. I believe they both received very good education here. Over the past eight months, I've become very frustrated with the simple availability of services being delivered by the public schools here. Years ago, I played basketball in the middle school gyms. More recently, I used to work out at the boot camps run by Todd Voss, and my wife attended water aerobics. Both of these activities were hosted in the middle school. Now we have no prospects of these, that they will be allowed in schools anytime in the near future. I was under the impression that our tax dollars paid for these schools. Perhaps that has changed. Our students and our community are suffering mentally and physically. I feel for the many athletes who had had their senior seasons taken away last spring and the fall and perhaps winter sports seasons this year. I feel bad for the FFA students who have had many of their leadership development events done virtually or canceled. Attending the National FFA Convention with thousands of other blue jacket-wearing students was one of the most inspiring, informative experiences of my life. Will they be allowed to have an FFA banquet or honor their members in March? Right now, it looks bleak. Is this the new normal? We are allowing a virus with a 99.97% survival rate to dictate every aspect of our lives. We have become so fearful and risk adverse that we can't see our children, parents, and teachers are suffering far greater than any damage COVID-19 could do? If the answer is yes, I weep for the future." The next is from Brian Went at 213 South Sixth Street here in Fort Atkinson. "I am writing to you as a parent of an elementary student in hopes that you are actively working on a plan to get kids back to school, in-person learning, rather, ASAP. Virtual learning has been a Band-Aid given the current circumstances around COVID-19. It is time to remove that Band-Aid and make a plan to get kids back in school. My child is not receiving the quality education they should through the virtual format. I feel my child is falling behind and needs full days of in-person instruction to catch up on the learning that has been lost. I don't have any data on how students are performing virtually, but my inclination is that it's not going well. The last seven months of living in a world with COVID-19 has come to show that the fears that children, parents, and teachers have of contracting the virus and having serious complications have been grossly inflamed by the media, at least for the majority of the population. The truth is, it is real, but is not something most of fear, but is not something for most to fear, especially children and young adults. I suggest the school district go back to dual in-person and virtual formats, similar to how the school year started. This allows the parents to choose which option is best for their family. I think you need to stop hiding behind fear, stop following the recommendation of the county health department, and get kids back in school. By choosing to keep them in a fully virtual learning environment, you are failing them academically, emotionally, and socially. The school district should deal with COVID-19 cases building by building and case by case, and not at the statistics of the county. If insurance and liability are a concern for the district, then you should develop a waiver of liability on this matter for parents to sign should they choose in-person learning." The next is from Dale Prisk at 1212 Comanche Court here in Fort Atkinson. "I am writing this email because I feel like I speak for a large and sometimes silent section of our community that feels these current learning options available from this district are unsustainable. Furthermore, there is no end in sight, and you could argue that there is little to no effort or planning to resume in-person learning, which is incredibly disappointing. Whenever I watch the board's meetings, it has become painfully obvious that there has been a shift from doing what's best for our kids and their development to what you all feel is the most virtuous way to keep our community safe. Somewhere along the line, we stopped caring about how kids learn and the quality of their learning, and instead took the position that sick kids, parents, and community members, et cetera, are directly tied to your decisions and therefore too dangerous to allow. I'd like to point out that the community does not need you to be the lifeguards of where we live and us parents as adults capable of making our own decisions in the best kind, in the best interest of our families. We need you to figure out how to get our children a quality education. Taking on this position of zero illness has put you in direct conflict with the very folks you are supposed to be representing. It was obvious from the surveys taken this summer forward that the community that you represent wants kids back in person, but apparently that doesn't matter. The simple reality here is that you are doing damage to an entire district of kids, and it's incredibly sad how this has been allowed for so long. Kids, do not, all capitalized, learn as well virtual, and you know this. Everyone knows this. There is no reason to think COVID will go away anytime soon, so you can either learn to live with it or let us kill us all slowly while we pretend to be experts in a field that even the best scientists have found difficult to do. Now that you are extending it to November 30th out of courtesy for scheduling, give me a break. It feels like you have no more ideas and are just hiding behind county metrics because it's more difficult than upsetting the small majority of parents that actually only want virtual. Thought that was why we had two options. COVID-19 is significantly less dangerous than the seasonal flu with district-aged children as well, which is why our board closing schools makes no sense to me. Look it up. Other districts that actually want to have in-person learning can figure this out, so why can't we, if you actually want to? Most people know several people that have had COVID, and seeing how the recovery rate is 99%, it's hard to swallow that this somehow an existential threat to our kids. It's not, no matter how much, and the scary math comes out of the county office. We know too many people who have had cold or flu-like symptoms and then was fine a few days later. I'm sure you all know plenty of folks who recovered as well. My concern early on with shifting to virtual only is that you would..."
Sorry, Dr. Abbott, but I need to interrupt. That is the community's time.
Okay, thank you. That is the last comment that we have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott, for reading those, and thank you for those who submitted them. We will now move ahead to the consent agenda.
Yes, as we know, Robert's Rules provides for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in the single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members in advance to assure for an extensive and thorough review as it becomes part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Items this evening: Item A, the regular meeting minutes from October 26, 2020. Item B, Wisconsin OPEB Trust Annual Review and Report. Item C, New Board Policy 8450.01, Personal Protective Equipment During Pandemic/Epidemic Events. Item D, Board Policy 0167.1, Voting Update. Item E, Board Policy 0164.1, Regular Meetings Update. Item F, Board Policy 29.2 Updates. Item G, Gifts to the School District. This evening, they include community members' contributions of $263 from the Roundup Your Change drive hosted by Hometown Pharmacy. Item H, Budget Transfers, which there are many. And Item I, Payment of District Bills and the Treasurer's Report.
All right, does any board member have, thank you, Dr. Abbott, does any board member have anything they would like to discuss individually in the consent agenda, or can we go ahead and move to approve the consent agenda? Seeing no discussion, we can go ahead and entertain the motion.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting dated... Wait, sorry, that's the wrong one.
Could you say consent agenda as written?
Okay. Be it resolved that we approve the consent agenda as written?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Paul and a seconded by Mrs. Sneeden. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? And that passes. We will now move on to COVID-19 addendum to the employee handbook.
As you recall, last month, Mrs. Harper, Director of Human Resources, presented the COVID-19 addendum to the employee handbook. She talked through the process for the Personnel Committee's review, as well as feedback that she received after that meeting. This is an addendum to the handbook, therefore this is the second reading of that, those items, rather. There has not been additional feedback that we've received on those topics unless the board had received others that we're unaware of. So this again would be the second reading, which would bring those into fruition.
Any discussion? I think we've all kind of been through these, and we've all probably been pummeled with this kind of information for a few months now, so we go ahead and entertain the motion to approve that.
Be it resolved that the COVID-19 addendum to the employee handbook, as documented in the board materials, be removed from the table and adopted for use in the School District of Fort Atkinson.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Sneeden and a seconded by Mr. Nicrom. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? And that passes. We will now move on to COVID-19 addendum to the employee handbook.
As you'll recall, last month, Mrs. Harper, Director of Human Resources, presented the COVID-19 addendum to the employee handbook. She talked through the process for the Personnel Committee's review, as well as feedback that she received after that meeting. This is an addendum to the handbook, therefore this is the second reading of that, those items, rather. There has not been additional feedback that we've received on those topics unless the board had received others that we're unaware of. So this again would be the second reading, which would bring those into fruition.
Any discussion? I think we've all kind of been through these, and we've all probably been pummeled with this kind of information for a few months now, so we go ahead and entertain the motion to approve that.
Be it resolved that the COVID-19 addendum to the employee handbook, as documented in the board materials, be removed from the table and adopted for use in the School District of Fort Atkinson.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Sneeden and a seconded by Mr. Nicrom. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? And that passes. All right, now we will move along to the Authorization to Depose of Equipment No Longer Useful to the District.
Yes, we're good at storing things, and we're working hard, harder to move some of those things along. As is stated in the agenda, given Board Policies 7310, disposition of personal property, items having a unit cost to the district of more than $5,000 may not be sold or disposed of without specific board approval on an item-by-item basis. And that is what you're doing this evening. Mr. Carter, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, also has some pictures attached to the agenda, which I think affirm the need for those to move along from the district. So no matter how much he tried to make that van look good, I just don't think he could accomplish his goal. So there are some items for your consideration there.
Thank you, Dr. Abbott. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board on items to dispose of?
How have they lasted this long?
I was going to say next, but I think it gives good evidence that we get our use out of the things that we purchase.
Right? Wow.
All right, well, we can go ahead and entertain a motion to pass that.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the disposal of a 1988 Chevy van, push scrubber, speed scrubber 2701, riding scrubber advanced, Avenger XP, advanced scrubber model 260B, Clark scrubber model 1700B2, tornado scrubber, and Thoromatic scrubber model TCOBN.
I will second. Nice job on that.
Elizabeth edition, I think, on the one.
Motion by Mr. Paul, a seconded by Mr. Nicrom, and a roll call, please, Dr. Abbott.
Yeah, Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
And Mrs. Sneeden.
Aye.
Mr. Nicrom.
Yes.
Mr. Paul. Mr. Chaney.
Yes, and that passes. We can get rid of those goods. Moving forward to the school board election information, I believe Cory has some updates for, or Mr. Nicrom has some updates for us on that.
I do. An election for the school board will be held on Tuesday, April 6, 2021. The spring election will be for one seat on the school board. The incumbent currently holding the seat is Rachel Sneeden. Anyone interested in running for the seat should contact the District Superintendent and Board of Education Minister Assistant, Lisa Haas, in the Luther Administration Center at 201 Park Street, or by phone, 920-563-7800, extension 8870. Those interested will be given materials including the election schedule, a WASB guide for candidates, and necessary forms. All the information and forms are also available on our school district's website. The deadline for filing Declaration of Candidacy Form and Campaign Registration Statement is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 5, 2021. The deadline for incumbents to file for notification of non-candidacy is December 28, 2020. If primary election is needed, it will be held on Tuesday, February 16, 2021. The elected school board member will take office Monday, April 26, 2021.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nicrom, for the board election information update. Moving on to school mental health services report, and Mrs. Hollenberger.
Good evening.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So it's always a pleasure to share with the board all of the amazing things going on in the district, and tonight is no different. Tonight's behavioral mental health report will outline the framework in which we continue to function, as well as highlight some of the areas of continued growth and focus. Let's see, what do I need to do here? Thank you. Okay. So school mental health has always been important in the school environment. In the last five or so years, research continues to support this importance and the necessity of continuing to increase awareness and develop a strong understanding of the connection of mental health to achievement and school success. School mental health services and supports are an effective means of addressing the mental health needs of children and improving the learning environment. Comprehensive school mental services, mental health services, help educators prevent and respond to crises while fostering a school climate that supports teaching and learning. School mental health is seldom something that stands alone, but rather becomes intricately interwoven into a myriad of best practices. What I'm outlining and speaking about tonight is carefully, is a carefully extracted portion of practices and programming that happen within a multi-leveled systems of support. Oops, I went the wrong way. So the interdependence of mental health is important to note. It takes all of us developing and understanding and increasing our knowledge in this area to make it work. We need each other, and the sooner we learn that, the better it is for all of us. The Department of Public Instruction developed a framework that has been shared repeatedly, and although somewhat basic in its depiction, it does a good job of visually representing the various levels of support and the interdependence each level has on the ones around it. As with any structure, a strong foundation is key. Without a strong foundation, you will have trouble creating anything of value. The foundational principles supporting the framework are critical to the success of prevention, early intervention, and intensive supports for the positive development of students' social and emotional competencies and mental health. The strength of our system in the School District of Fort Atkinson lies firmly in the foundational practices that are put into place and continually built upon. Like any situation, neglecting the foundational structures leads to instability in other areas. Therefore, the district continues to ground our levels of support in reliable data, culturally responsive and evidence-based practices which value and promote effective school mental health supports, ongoing continuous learning and improvement to ensure mental health initiatives are prioritized, and the integration of mental health initiatives into already successful levels of, systems of support. An area of foundational growth noted this year is the shift in perspective to understand that attention to students' social, emotional, and mental health needs is critical for academic success. Additionally, self-care of staff is not only part of the comprehensive school health model, it is a needed and much-needed ingredient to ensure the success of students. While we've experienced great change over the past months, the strength of our foundational supports has not only allowed us to continue with our strong work in this area, but it has also allowed us the footing necessary to change direction as abruptly as we had been expected to. Resting on top of our strong foundational structure is our layer of universal practices. Mental health is a dimension of overall health on a continuum from high-level wellness to severe illness. Universal strategies promote the social and emotional competence, well-being, and development of all of our students. This is definitely the meat and potatoes of our system of support. Relationships, engagement, resiliency, mental health education, stigma reduction, safe, active, and positive school climates, and social and emotional learning are all important aspects of our universal practices. Students use positive relationships with their teachers as a secure base from which to take on academic challenges and advance their social, emotional development. This has always been an area of focus in our schools, and with the closure due to COVID in the spring and the shift to virtual learning this fall, connecting with students is a prioritized and primary focus at all levels. Classroom communities, enrichment times, study periods, homerooms, virtual lunch bunches, Zoom clubs are just a few of the many ways that connections continue to be created with students in our district. Family involvement in children's education has a significant impact on children's academic outcomes. And now with parents serving an even larger role of support, this partnership is an area that becomes even more impactful. This is an area of increased need and continual learning for us as a district. From parent webinars, from outside resources, to self-made support groups, our school teams have been working to capture where and how to best support parents in this new partnership. Trauma has never been more evident in our school systems than it currently is. What used to be something some kids experience has now, thanks to COVID, become a collective experience. This collective trauma, whether it stands alone or is layered onto existing trauma, can impact a child's ability to regulate emotions, attend school regularly, demonstrate achievement, and take on new learning. Increasing staff awareness and understanding of trauma and its effects helps to increase our sensitivity to the needs created within a trauma situation. Staff from all levels in the district have attended trauma-sensitive schools, trained the trainer training, to become facilitators of trauma-sensitive practices in their buildings. While some of these specific and structured trainings have been paused due to our current situation, this information continues to be shared regularly with staff and integrated into daily interactions with students. It is our continual goal to continue helping all children develop healthy coping strategies and resilience in facing our current and future struggles. Research shows, and teachers know, that students who demonstrate good social skills and the ability to manage their emotions will likely succeed. So social-emotional learning continues to be the plate on which all other learning is placed. Using the CASL framework for guidance in this area, the district continues to grow adult social-emotional learning as well as interweave intentional social-emotional learning for all students through our curriculum, our careers classes, our personal connections, et cetera. The effects of COVID from a universal standpoint certainly highlight our practices. However, these remain in effect regardless. Mental health is our focus, whether we are in a global pandemic or not. We continue to focus in areas of mental health literacy and wellness, focusing on direct instruction in personal mental health strategies, suicide prevention, and overall wellness of both staff and students. Additionally, we continue to strengthen our crisis prevention and response planning, ensuring safety, welfare, and recovery in the event of a critical or emergency incident. Ensuring high-quality, universal supports and practices allows us to deftly identify students who needed select supports. By nature, these are more targeted based off of student data and individualized need. It is our goal to make sure that students have access to effective intervention, to assure challenges are addressed early and with successful outcomes. Early identification, screening, and progress monitoring, individual and group interventions, and strong partnerships with families and community agencies are the cornerstone of our selected practices. Identifying students in need of support early in their mental health challenge may help them forego more serious problems. The district remains a part of the S-BERT Screening Brief Intervention Referral to Treatment Grant through DPI, allowing our pupil services staff at the middle school and high school levels to receive training in this research-based, early identification, screening, and monitoring process. Additionally, information from our climate and culture surveys allows pupil services staff to identify needs beyond those typically exhibited in classrooms or group settings. This seemingly informal data helps pupil services providers create individual and group interventions that are specifically focused to help meet individualized needs. Pupil services teams continue to gather our own data, identifying those students who need support beyond universal strategies in the area of social-emotional learning. These teams are working constantly to connect with students in whatever ways work. While this practice is typical, the ways in which we connect certainly have become more creative due to our current situation. Pupil services providers and administration report doing more frequent and larger amounts of home visits just to make some level of in-person connection. There have been staff that have conducted yard sessions for students who struggle to be online. Schools, I'm sorry, schools have created student contact teams to create yet an additional support system for students who need more than what is being received universally, and this list continues to go on. Needless to say, the typically peripheral staff of counselors, interventionists, school psychologists have been boots on the ground since the initial closure in spring and haven't missed a beat yet this year. Our interdependence expands to our community partners as we've had amazing outpouring of additional supports for students, families, and staff alike from the Jefferson County Human Services Department, as well as community-based independent counseling services and Fort Healthcare. I feel confident that as needs continue to be identified, resources will certainly be available. Students who have intensive supports struggle to learn without proper individualized support in place. When prevention and early interventions do not meet students' needs, other interventions should be used. At this level of support, schools, students, families, and community providers need to be planning together. Counseling and support, crisis and trauma response after a critical incident, and deepened collaboration among students, families, and community providers is an integral part of providing intensive supports. Schools include opportunities throughout the school day to receive needed therapy and counseling services. Additionally, we partner closely with Fort Healthcare by contracting the services of a behavioral mental health counselor who works directly with our students in the buildings. This is a program that has evolved through the past few years, resulting in full-time services that are provided at the middle school and high school level this year. This intensive support is buoyed by a seamless referral process, allowing identified students to receive services in a timely manner. This year, we have a counselor who is actually a former Fort Atkinson High School graduate, which adds another level of dimension to how important these services actually are. Additionally, we have identified increased family participation as a goal in this area, understanding that that connection is so very valuable. I need to note that this would not be possible without the continued support of the school board, so I thank you for that. When a collaborative team or individual school professional makes a referral to a behavioral health provider in the community, school mental health providers refer, monitor, and with consent, and monitor with teams with families and providers until the student is demonstrating improvement. Collaboration and co-planning are standard practice at this intensive level of support. COVID-19 has brought about a complex array of factors. Uncertainty, social isolation, parental angst, each having a different but certain impact on the mental health of children and adolescents. Mental health and well-being is being challenged more now than it ever has across all environments. It's important to understand that our interdependence on each other is more important now than it ever has been. We need to become informed, seek out resources, connect with someone, and don't remain alone. We are definitely stronger together. Thank you for your time tonight. If you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Can you maybe just give us a little insight as to what kind of shifts and approach that you've made to school? You're given kind of the situation we're in and the virtual learning and how, I guess, what observations you have on how the interactions between parents and kids in the district with staff are? Are you seeing more people reach out for, you know, help or I guess, what are you seeing out there now?
So there hasn't been a huge increase in the need. I think what's happening is our need to connect with students has become greater because we don't have them just kind of filtering around the halls. So we've created more, we need more eyes and ears out there. And so what we've been doing is empowering families to be those eyes and ears because we're really used to, our service providers are really used to being able to get eyes on kids and see them and be able to figure out and evaluate what we're seeing. And because we don't necessarily see anything but their little faces on the screens or their black screens and their chat responses, we've been really reaching, we've been creating a more interwoven communication with parents and friends and neighbors to make sure that we're getting the information we need from them. Does that answer your question, Mr. Paul?
Thanks.
So we need to, you know, encourage or empower families and close relatives or people close to our students to reach out if they feel like it.
To reach out, absolutely. And our website, our school district website, is a wealth of information. If you go to the pupils, any of the school webpages have information on it for our counseling services. All of our counselors have put together webpages that give additional resources or activities that can be taken on with families. And so there's help out there, there's resources out there, there's people to talk to. Don't, like, there's certainly no reason to remain alone.
Yeah, you know, sometimes it's all you need, all people need is just a different person other than mom, dad, or teacher to talk to. Just to give them, create a space for safety and...
Yeah.
It's all, I mean, yeah.
Is the bigger, some of the biggest hurdles that you're seeing, is it just being able to identify the individuals in need of the services? Would you say right now?
Definitely. Yeah, definitely. So we always have our base of students that we can identify based on whatever demographic we're looking at. However, the more significant that is, like, the more significant factors they have, the less we're able to see them. And so it's been creating that connection. So like I had mentioned, like, that's not even exaggerating that there's been more home visits than we've ever done. Just to stand on someone's porch and wave into kids or to students. There's been situations, our school resource officer has been extremely active and involved in just reaching out and making sure that kids are okay and that they're, even if we're not hearing from them, we've seen them in some respect.
Sure. Yeah, makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Anything else?
Can I just say, I mean, thank you very much for your direction and your leadership in this area. I think some would remember that this presentation would have been much shorter than it is this evening just a few years ago. And with the board's support and the community's need, this is an area of our organization I think we should have a lot of pride in. The needs and the resource needs of our community this fall certainly are unprecedented. And you've allowed us, in Lisa's leadership and her teams, to have those supports at the ready. And some of the things Lisa shared with us this evening are brand-new, things that weren't needs before that are currently. And that type of ability to be nimble, I think, is just outstanding. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you much, Solenberger. Thank you very much. All right, we will now move on to school reopening update, and Dr. Abbott has a presentation prepared for us.
The 24 days since your last board meeting have shown some significant shifts in the COVID-19 within the Jefferson County and well beyond. After your last meeting, we saw and felt little movement in people's perceptions and reactions to the board's decision-making in maintaining a virtual-only learning format for the majority of our students until further discussion could occur this evening. Some support, some reject, some accept, and some oppose the decisions made at these tables. I feel that is a safe bet that tonight's discussion and decision-making will yield similar results. While everyone's point of views, thoughts, ideas, concerns, and demonstrations of support should be honored, I do hope that as we enter this season of gratitude, we keep in mind that everyone is doing the simple best they can to make the very best decisions they can for our community, our families, our staff, and clearly, most importantly, our students. My role in this position is to provide the board current and factual information, then suggest structures for discussions to occur so that decisions can be made. This evening, I will again provide an update on current data, county and state suggestions, other area/district comparisons, as well as learning options to be considered whenever the board believes it is the right time to consider enacting them. I'll also suggest that the board entertain discussion during my presentation rather than waiting until the end. So I thought this evening it would be best to start with data from Jefferson County. I think we're all well aware that Jefferson County, the state, as well as the nation and beyond have seen significant spikes in the 24 days since we've last been together. So I certainly won't belabor the point. And these are all tables taken directly from the Jefferson County Health Department. The first chart that you see here is the daily positivity rate as a percentage of positive tests. So as you'll see, I mean, in the last, since we've met on any given day, 20 to 45% of tests administered have had a positive result. And this is updated, I believe, once a week, so it does jump around a little bit. But if we look at those numbers compared to where we were certainly at the beginning of the year, that is significantly different than what we've seen. The next is a demonstration of various age groups impacted with positive results in Jefferson County. The age group bands have shifted a bit. I mean, I think we'd be splitting hairs to say that they've shifted significantly. But the school age population, as well as young adults, have definitely seen an increase within Jefferson County over the past month. Next you'll see of Fort Atkinson, you'll see this was updated this afternoon at 1,036 positive cases. Obviously, Fort Atkinson has the greatest population density in Jefferson County, so one would expect to see a number that's far greater in Fort Atkinson, perhaps than other areas of the county. In talking with the county today, they did share that that's, it is a disproportionate amount, that there is a significant difference here than there are in other parts of the county. So this chart, I think, is visually representative of what the county is seeing in Fort Atkinson's specific data. Next you'll see the average county case rate per 100,000. This is the statistic that may be viewed as the most important when it comes to continuing school operations. So as you know, in the Harvard model, we're off, certainly people have suggested that the board is simply using one number to make decisions, which I think we've been clear is not necessarily the case. The Harvard model, which is used nationally and has been accepted in Wisconsin as well as Jefferson County, would suggest that any number over 25 would be of significant risk and that virtual instruction should be implemented. This number was 94 yesterday, it was 90 the day before that, and so there is some mobility in that number. Remember, this is the seven-day averaging of this number. So if there's one day that was low and it drops off, that you do see some fluctuation. But this number has been in the 70s, 80s, and 90s now for quite some time. The next, and I'm going to read an explanation because I think this is, again, important, as I shared last month. "In an effort to continually monitor the county metrics and their effects on our one-fort community, we have engaged the services of an expert in probability modeling, who shares with us a couple of times a week what you see here. This monitoring system allows us to see the probability of the case rate meeting the threshold for county opening or closing, as well as the trend of infection data in the county, usually before the county updates their dashboard." So he actually extracts this data from other locations and then is able to work this into his model. "Similar to weather forecasts, this system gives us updated forecasts in advance of when we might be able to reopen, and when we do reopen, what direction the data is going for the possibility of a future closure." So we are continually getting an idea of where the county data is headed and what that means for our district, our students, and our larger community. You can see here, at least I hope you can see here, there are three bars in the viewing audience. These are all linked to the agenda as they always are. What we're looking at is the probability of our ability to open, given the county... What we're looking at is the probability of our ability to open, given the county standard or the county guidance. So, we have, in this example, a 10% chance of that being achieved by December 16th. We have a 50% chance of that being achieved by the 22nd of December. And we have a 90% chance of that happening by January 21st. And that would be based on the county's metrics, the county's guidance as to when reopening could occur. This does fluctuate. Whenever we get one, it fluctuates because those variables you see on the left continue to fluctuate as well. And the more data sets this model has, the greater, statistically, it becomes more and more significant and able to sort of see how things matriculate through this system. So, these dates have actually shifted. One of the things in the last couple of models, though, that have shown is, is the likelihood of the COVID-19 going down as fast as it went up seems greater than it has in the past. So, there was a thought that once we were up here, that perhaps we would be here and you'd be virtual through the rest of the school year, or whatever the case might be, which clearly, anything is possible, I suppose. But what's starting to look like now is, just as fast as we've gone up, there is the possibility for that inflection point, that tipping point, to occur so that we start a decrease down. So, that's really, I guess, a very long-winded way of saying. Statistically speaking, this frame has become actually a little bit shorter than it had been in the past as to the increased likelihood of that being possible in keeping with the As you know, and the community knows, we have launched the School District Fort Atkinson COVID-19 Dashboard earlier this fall, and we do update that once a week. I did ask that that be updated this afternoon. Ironically, since we updated it this afternoon, we have had additional positive cases reported. So, all kidding aside, in the last two weeks, we could update this a couple of times a day. We've just have had that much activity. The caution, I would say, to you, as well as the community, is that many of these are self-reported. And given that we're in a virtual-only learning environment, we do hear from the county, albeit sometimes delayed. But then, it's a matter of parents, or students, or staff members letting us know. So, it's somewhat reactive that way. So, I think these numbers are about as conservative as they could be. Incidentally, at about 4:30 this afternoon, I got a call that we had additional positive cases at the middle school. So, given the density of cases and where they are and our ability to maintain staff, we are going to be closing the middle school until after Thanksgiving, physically closing the plant. Given that in that building, about 75% of our teachers have been teaching from the building virtually, we're going to take tomorrow to allow them to get in first thing in the morning, get what they need out, so that they can resume instruction with students on Monday. So, things clearly are happening somewhat rapidly right now in all of our buildings. So, in this example, you can see, as of about 2 o'clock this afternoon, we have 38 students who have been reported to be in quarantine and six positive cases. You can see on the staff side that we have seven in quarantine and two positive cases. But again, things have changed pretty significantly, even in those couple of hours since we pulled this data together for you this evening. So, just a little of context. The significance of the positive case data has not allowed us to implement an in-between, in-person option, given the county guidance. I think oftentimes, we're hearing, "Why don't you," or "You could," or "You should," which are all great ideas. They're also ideas that we've been working on and have had sort of on file at the ready for quite, quite, quite some time now. But given the county guidance, in-person options have not been possible and will be when the board feels that it is safe for students and staff to return. So, given the current metrics, we need the data to trend downward in order to reopen in any large group in-person learning. Other districts have, of course, we hear, and continue to close, given too few staff to operate, or given illness rates and an abundant contact tracing number. So, clearly, other districts in the county have been open, and I think we hear that very frequently, and we're very aware. There have been a significant amount of opening and closing based on the things I've mentioned there. I'd like to also mention that closure of our school district buildings would have been needed intermittently throughout this time of virtual-only instruction, perhaps more than people realize. And this, you don't need to look at closely necessarily, but in one situation, our high school would have been virtual-only, closed, opened for one day, and then closed again. So, I mean, things can be somewhat tumultuous. In this example, and again, after today's data, this is also a little bit old, I suppose, all but one of our buildings would have been closed at least once during this time of Regarding area/district operations, this is something we're often compared to other districts. I won't go through this in lots of detail, but in Jefferson, clearly, I think we're all aware, they have had in-person instruction, all levels, and Jefferson have intermittently closed, given cases and their lack of staffing to have in-person instruction. Johnson Creek is currently in-person. They started the year virtually. They have had some intermittent closures at various levels. Whitewater is in-person. They've been in-person since the middle of October. The high school and two of their three elementary schools have gone virtual on and off since that point. Milton, I think some people may be aware that Rock County is going back to Phase 1 of their COVID plan, which means that they are asking schools to consider virtual-only instruction for the two weeks following any holiday, or after a significant seasonal break, for reasons I think many people understand. So, Milton decided at a special board meeting last night that they will be moving to a virtual-only format K-12, beginning after the Thanksgiving holiday until January 15th. Edgerton will be doing the same. Palmyra, and honestly, I updated my slide, but not this slide. Palmyra has been in-person somewhat throughout. And then Cambridge, their middle school and high school, they are virtual-only. But in following Dane County that side, they are virtual-only until the 25th of January. They do have some elementary in-person, and they have been intermittently closed during that time as well. Just to give you a very quick idea, and I realize that these other counties aren't Jefferson County, but I think we've seen a lot of activity in neighboring counties over the past week, or if not, the last couple of days. As I think everyone is aware, Derek, Dane County has really come out strong in no indoor mask gatherings, no large groups, no limiting outdoor gatherings of no more than 10, limiting group exercise classes, and down it goes. Rock County, I just described for you as well. Jefferson County, I met with health officials and others this morning for a fair amount of time. They made it clear that they will not be making changes to their guidance now or in the future. They believe that it is the correct guidance for school districts to follow. They do not believe that this is the right time to have in-person instruction, given the current state of the pandemic. And they will, they also made it clear that they will not be making decisions for districts. I think there's some, not just in Fort Atkinson, but others, who applaud the fact that there are not state or county decisions, and others that rue the fact that there are not county or state decisions. Fort Healthcare, in that same conversation, shared issues with capacity, appropriate facilities, and equipment, and more. Definitely, a flavor of all of those entities being in control, but definitely at the peak of what they've needed to deal with or endure through this pandemic time. I'm also aware that Walworth County is in the midst of decision-making regarding virtual-only instruction as well. So, we're sort of in that spot right now where counties are starting to make decisions. I think many are also aware that Governor Evers provided an Executive Order Number 94. We're also clear that this is not a binding executive order, as it was in the spring prior to it being challenged. It is virtually the same executive order as it was in the spring, which is asking that people settle in, and then people don't move around more than they need to, and employ those mitigation strategies as much as they possibly can with fidelity for a period of time in order to get COVID to back down a little bit, to get that trend going in the other direction. So, the governor has made it clear what the state, what his wishes are, what his office's wishes are related to the pandemic at this time. Last week, and I won't spend a lot of time here, but I did share with the board some ideas we had on a decision-making scale, this idea that we aren't tied to, you aren't tied to a single data point. There's nothing magical about 25, that it is possible for us to look at in-person instruction for additional groups of students if there is a trend or a set of data points that are headed in the right direction. And without putting words in anybody's mouth, I think there was a sense that, you know, if things start trending in an appropriate direction, that does create room for us to start exploring some other options, as we've been talking about in our construction, this Level 2, which is some in-person instruction with significant supports and safety precautions in place there. So, again, this is where we're at, and this is where I think many people's angst has laid, which is in-person with significant safety precautions. Is there something more than having virtual-only for 95% of our student population at this time? And this is the point where we talk about the fact that the board determines when that is able to occur, based on the information and the discussion that you have together. And the administration and others is to determine how, and to provide you options when you've determined it's the right time that we can move forward with additional in-person instruction. So, what we've put together for you, if you would choose to use it, is sort of a decision-making guide, because I think some of this is so big that it helps to look at it in pieces. So, I would suggest that there are three steps here. The first is considering the governor's order, the Jefferson County data, and the forecasting model, and have some discussion there. And then, if warranted, move to Step 2, which is consideration of approach to pandemic response for our school district, if that's the same, different, or in-between. And then, if need be, Step Number 3, consideration of follow-up decisions or guidelines to support that implementation. None of this is simple, and it's far more complex than it seems on the surface, I think, sometimes. So, with that, I would say that we're in the Step 1. I've shared some information on current local, as well as county data, information from other neighboring counties, our return date projection from our forecasting model, as well as information from the governor's office. So, I believe this might be a good time, Mr. Chaney, for some discussion amongst the board, and I would, might suggest that there's a point of decision-making here. And that is, if you are at a point where, given the current data, the governor's order, and the return date forecasting, is additional discussion warranted regarding moving away from our current virtual-only approach to teaching and learning between now and winter break? So, certainly, you are free to do whatever it is you would like, but I think that is sort of the burning question at this point, before we go further.
Thank you very much. It's very helpful, Dr. Abbott, to have this kind of outline here. So, I guess we'll go ahead and open it up. Does the board see any reason to abandon the course that we're on and reevaluate how we're going to send people back into the buildings? Go ahead. Well, so, what we're really looking for is here is, we don't, the win isn't necessarily, the win is what we're talking about, but we're really trying to decide whether we want to change our win necessarily. Does anybody have any suggestions? Or, to me, personally, it seems like we're, things haven't gotten any better, they've gotten worse. And I feel like the more we are focused on the other, putting out of fires and whatnot, the less time we're able to focus on delivering a quality product to our kids, you know, which is what we need to focus on doing. But, you know, we're bored. My personal opinion would be, I feel no need to go beyond Step 1 tonight. But that's just me.
I guess, my feeling on it right now is, you know, quite frankly, I'll be honest, like, the next holidays have me a bit concerned, timing on things, and just where the numbers are at right now. Last year, I want to go in person, it just doesn't feel genuine right now to say, hey, like, given the timing of things, you know, if, you know, we saw things heading in the right direction, or at this point, I just don't feel like that's the case right now. So, as much as I want to get these kids back into school, I just, like, given Thanksgiving and holidays coming up here, it's like, I'm concerned about further spread beyond that point, thus taking us even further out of what we currently have right now. And let this be clear, like, everybody on this board wants to get these kids back into school, and it's going to sound like I'm kind of flopping here, and let this be clear, everybody, everybody's been working very hard in making sure that, you know, the admin team, things like that, for options to get us back into school. You know, pre-boards and things like that, it's been very clear that Dr. Abbott and his team have been doing that. But I am concerned that, you know, we're doing, we're not doing ourselves any favors by, hey, let's get the kids back into school next week, then all of a sudden, we're stretching this thing out, you know, another three or four weeks, beyond what it should have been had we, had we just kind of kept on staying the course for the next couple of weeks here. And, you know, I just don't want to sit back and kind of ruin the Thanksgiving and holidays for people, if we can just wait this, wait it out just a little bit longer. And I do believe that we've kind of gotten this, you know, just based on the communication we've received from the public, I think we've kind of gotten a little groove here, kind of like a little sweet spot. We've gotten some consistency with what's going on with virtual. I believe that, you know, the teachers are being more efficient than what they ever have been, which is, you know, the purpose to having a long-term approach to it here. So, at this point, like, I, you know, I think we kind of stay course here, but everybody on this board, I think we would all agree, we want to get these kids back to school sooner than later. So, it may seem like we're not, you know, depending on where the discussion goes tonight, it just may seem like we're, you know, going to delay even more, and that is not the case, and that's not what we want to be showing here. It's, we're playing a long-term game here. So, I'm in favor of, you know, continuing our, you know, what we're currently doing, and, you know, revisit this in the December board meeting.
Yeah, I agree. I am inclined to deviate from our current metrics or plan to some extent, but personally, not until we see a true inflection, or a leveling out, or even a decline. I think if we see, over the course of, you know, the data that Dr. Abbott's been getting, the predictive modeling suggests that it's possible that we have reached that point, which we'll have to just see, but, you know, if we see, and I'm not even thinking about a specific metric myself, but if we see over the course of the next few weeks that it truly has stabilized, or started to decline, or over the course of any few weeks in the next month, you know, I think we could reconvene at any time if things are looking better, but I don't, you know, I don't think formally scheduling anything till December is necessary at this point.
I think it makes sense, oh, sorry, I don't know if this is on or not, but...
Come right, come right.
I'll talk loud. I think it makes sense if we continue to stay the course that we're doing right now. I do not feel comfortable moving away from what we're doing and trying to bring kids back. I don't think it's the right time. And I'll, I continue to feel that way. But, yeah, I think we're all in agreement that as we see these numbers start coming down, you know, we know that we're going to do our best to get kids back to school. We already know our admin team and all the staff have been doing an amazing job behind the scenes, working out plans for when that happens. While you may not see it in these meetings, it is happening, and I think we've all been privy to kind of seeing how things are coming along, and I'm just, I'm really pleased with all the work that you guys have been doing behind the scenes, you know, to prepare us for when we do get to that time. I just don't think now is the time. And I, at this point, feel like we should wait until after winter break is done to reconvene in, but I would like to, at the December board meeting, to revisit this. And, but I would like to, at the December board meeting, to revisit this.
Well, everyone knows I would love to have our kids back, and I want our kids back. Last month, the month before, March. I do, I want them back. They need to be back. We all know that. We've all been trying. So yeah, cases are spiking. People are getting sick. They're also getting better. My mom had COVID. She had no idea. She didn't know until she got, she gave blood. And they sent her a letter. Guess what? You have the antibodies. She had no idea. Her husband never got sick. He actually got sick a few weeks ago. That was months after she had it. They've been in the same house for a whole, you know, we've heard stories of that. We've heard stories about, you know, running rampant through a family. But this virus is not, it's not adhering to an order. It's not adhering to people staying home. That's, you know, it, it's still here. It's always gonna be here. Maybe there's a vaccine, you know, that can be available before the end of the year. I don't know. We can't have our kids suffering at home. Cause my kids are. My kids are suffering sitting at home. I have to work full-time. My husband has to work full-time. As along with a lot of other parents. I am not comfortable leaving my kids, I don't, at home alone to do the schooling because I can't sit there with them. And I know a lot of other parents are like that, too. They can't sit there with their kids. If they sit there with their kids, then they don't have a house. They don't have a home because they can't go to work. And our kids are, I don't know if my kids eat lunch every day. I don't know that. I'm busy at work. I can't come home and check on my kids every day. I can't do that. A lot of other parents can't do that. This virus is going to be here. We cannot sit in fear. We cannot stay home and just hope it all goes away. It's not going to. We need to get these kids back in school sooner rather than later. I do not want to wait until December to go, oh, well, maybe. Yes, everybody, everybody knows the virus is ramping up. And it, people are getting sick. They're also getting better. That's the biggest thing, that people, they're concentrating on all of these numbers, but you can't tell me, you, not, not one of those people that have like gone crazy over all of these numbers can sit here and tell me how many people up to date have recovered. Do you have that specific number right now?
I don't.
Anybody? I mean, anybody?
I think if your, if your house is flooding, your house is flooding, you're not worried about whether it's wet or not, or how wet it is. I mean, it's wet.
But you're gonna recover from this.
But what we're saying though is like, I think this is, this is a different, I think it's, I think we're conflating two things. Like the, what we're seeing is when I walk past the hospital, which I do twice a day, it is packed.
Yeah.
There are people all over the place.
I work there, I know.
Okay, so the providers that work there though, they are getting burnt out, and they haven't even hit flu season.
Yes.
We've hit, we've hit 250,000 people have died this year. We haven't even hit flu season. So I know that this is nothing more than the flu, but it's already killed more than the flu, and we still haven't hit flu season. So I mean, personally, I see this ramping up is, I'm worried. I'm worried for my wife. I'm worried for people at the hospital. I mean, I real, I genuinely am. I've spoken to a couple of the nurses, and I'm, I'm genuinely worried about whether or not they're gonna come back to work. You know, they don't have to. Doctors and nurses can quit.
Absolutely.
You know, they can totally quit, and then, then if we lose, say, we lose two pediatricians in Fort Atkinson, or three, three primary physicians, I mean.
Oh, we have.
We're gonna lose our, we're gonna lose our.
We have.
Not, not at once. Not in, not in 11 years.
You know, that's another thing. We have done that, and we've prevailed through it. You know, we can do that. We owe it to our kids to get them back into school. That's, I mean, that's plain and simple. They need to go, and they need to go now, especially the elementary kids. My second grader, I don't know if she eats lunch because she is home by herself. She does have two older brothers, but I don't know if they eat lunch. That is a simple thing. A lot of parents are dealing with this. And the director of the CDC said, the kids are safer at school. They are. Teachers are safer at school. Why? Cause everybody's doing their precautions. They are. The director of the CDC just said that's tonight. The kids are safer at school for multiple reasons. Multiple reasons, not just safer from a virus. They're safer for so many other reasons. And I think we owe it to them to bring them back and say, yes, this is a scary time, but you're gonna be okay. You can do this. We can do this. I say we bring our elementary kids back in December. Bring those elementary kids back. They need to be in school.
And the adults who, who provide them with the education, bring them back as well?
Yes.
I, I have to respectfully disagree with you. And, and I know, I want kids just as, back just as bad as you do. I really do. It probably doesn't feel like that, but I do. The Fort Atkinson Healthcare put out an urgent message last week that said, we are running out of space for COVID patients. And, and I'm sorry, but we're having cases pop up left and right. I get people recover. Some have long-term lasting impacts. We still don't know everything about that yet. And this is not me living in fear. This is, we are being asked to do a very important task. And it's not just the Fort healthcare system that's asking the community to pitch in and pay attention right now. It's also our county, who has provided metrics and guidance that schools should not be open. And I'm sorry, but for our school district, I feel like we need to follow those. I think we're doing a good job. We are taking more into consideration than just a number. We're taking into consideration our staff, and I just, I, I get it. I get it's frustrating. I think that our school counselors are doing an incredible job at reaching out and going above and beyond to help support mental health needs at this time. I think that our teachers are bending over backwards and working long hours to make sure that their kids in virtual lessons are doing well. I just, I just don't feel like now's the time. And I, I want to reconsider this as soon as we start seeing those numbers drop. Now is not the time. That's just how I feel, and, and I, like I said, I just, I understand how you feel, but I just, I can't agree with that at this point.
I think we all definitely empathize with each other and with the community in that, I think we all here have different circumstances. All of us have different circumstances. You know, I've lost employment and been stuck home now because of the virus. And not only that, but my life has completely changed personally because there's nothing that people want to talk with me about more than this right now. And I would love for this to never be a topic ever again. If I, you know, I've said this in August. I just feel like we run the risk of two things happening if we were to go back in December. We run the risk of an increased level of infected people, whether or not they get sick, need to be hospitalized. We, and, and we know that there is a statistical line that can be drawn between people being sick and the economy, the local economy tanking. We just know that. I mean, we saw it at a, at a national level, and now there's actual studies that we can look at that show that that happens when, you know, when 35 middle-aged providers lose their paycheck for two weeks, and then have to miss a car payment, and then miss a mortgage, it's just this snowballing effect of people. Yep, and that's, and, and that, that's what happens when you can't be at work for two weeks. I mean, I have a friend here in town who's going through this right now. That's the first thing. I think we also run the risk of really putting people who have really put a lot of, put a lot in our hands, the staff, we're putting them in harm's way because, and I, I think, I think it's, it's interesting that you chuckle, but that's true. That we are, we are putting these people.
You're in harm's way everywhere you go.
Well, some people don't go anywhere, so they're not in harm's way.
And that's okay for them.
So, so I guess by that logic, then what we would do is we would just roll through all the staff until we have the, the necessary people to make it work, and then we'll just shove the kids back into the building with some subpar staff, because we're gonna lose some. Guaranteed, we're gonna lose some.
Oh, yes.
So yeah, so we'll just go get some new ones. Where are we gonna get them from? We already have a sub shortage. I mean, this is just, it's fraught with problems to, and, and, you know, we don't want to make this a thing where it's this group versus that group. But, I mean, right now, what we can do, yes, it's difficult. Yes, it's, it's, it's very hard for everybody uniquely. But I think what we're doing right now is, is the best for this community. And I, I'm, I'm sorry that this is such a divisive topic, but, you know, we are charged with the community to take responsibility of this, of this district. And that doesn't just mean by protecting the kids, it also means protecting the coffers. And we have a lot of money that we're gonna have to spend bringing people back, and we all know that. It's hundreds and hundreds of dollars more to clean a classroom. So I mean, this is all stuff that we have to consider. Is it fiscally responsible? Is it safe? Is, I mean, there's just, it's not just these few numbers and these metrics, and now we can just put these kids back in here. But I genuinely worry about bringing people back before they feel safe and losing a lot of good people. Cause we have a lot of good people that we could lose, and if we lose them, we're not gonna replace them with somebody who's gonna do the same job. And so are we still serving our mission? If we put a, a, a D-plus teacher in there with our kids, are we doing the right thing for those kids? By taking them out of home to give them the best thing that we could find right now, you know, it's a Band-Aid. I mean, that's, I worry about that. I mean, I worry about all this stuff, but that's my main.
Would, a quick question. Would there be any schools that would be, if we would decide to go back to school, say, next week? Just playing this game out in my head here. Would there be, be any schools that would be currently closed due to current numbers within the building?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the middle school, right?
Yeah.
Well, the middle school for sure, and probably two others. The high school for sure. And, I mean, I'm not at all trying to be dramatic. It just really changes day by day right now.
Yeah, I understand.
So really, if, you know, whenever the time comes, I suppose, you know, if, if your return date is, is X, I mean, the day before that happens, something could hypothetically pop up where then you're not opening that day. But, but where we sit right now, at least two, if not three of the schools would be closed.
I think we could sit here and probably beat this dead horse to death forever. But I think we should decide whether or not we want to deviate from our current considerations and then go further into our decision-making.
I'd like to make a motion to continue on the path that we've been on now through the end of winter break, January 4th, with reconsideration to be made at the next board meeting in December, or sooner meeting if the numbers drop significantly.
I have a motion for Mrs. Sneeden, and a second by Mr. Paul, and that's a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. And all those opposed?
Me.
All right, and that passes. So we will not be going any further in our decision-making matrix.
If it's all right with you, Mr. Chaney, I did want to just add a, a little bit of color to a couple of things that have come up. I, I think it, it, well-intentioned, I think, this presumption that we have been creating or have been filled with ideas as to what things could look like when the board decided it was the appropriate time to bring students back is, is certainly not accurate. So we've been working all along administratively, and over the, the past few weeks since your last meeting, really digging into what are some additional options that we could consider when the time is right. And so the litmus test that we, we've sort of been working from is, how is it that we can improve cohorting from where we started in the fall? What is it that we could do to keep groups of kids together? How disruptive is that? What's the possibility with that? Increased physical distancing, as you know, we started the year doing our best to maintain a three-foot physical distance in, in classrooms and in other spaces where people are located. Is that still possible, or is the board looking for actual additional distancing based on, on what some people are, are saying? And then also, how is it that we decrease the opportunities for students and staff to be considered close contacts given positive cases? So that's frankly a, a big issue, particularly, well, on the staff, but particularly on the student side. That can happen very quickly where, where one student on the right team or in the right classroom or the right situation actually has sort of a cascading effect of, of people, then that need to be out for 14 days. And that's also been difficult for some districts on the staff side. So the essential question, the charge for all of the administrators over the past several weeks and obviously the past several months is, you know, what would student schedules look like? What would building operations look like? What would logistics need to look like to better address the things that I just mentioned? The physical distancing, the cohorting, and the decreased opportunities for students to be, and staff to be considered close contacts. So I want to be very, very clear that we have files and files and files of plans and variations of these four different items here. And I just wanted to be, and help the public be very aware that when the time is right, we have things ready to go. And I'm not going to get into these in any sort of detail this evening, but just, I mean, these are sort of the things that we hear on a recurring basis from the community, which, which is great. But one is obviously, like choose your own adventure of slides here today, prioritizing the next sort of highest-risk group of students. Is there a way for us to get those primary students back as well as ELL students? Or those with housing insecurities, or internet access issues, or struggling learners? Is there a way for us to get some of the CTE students back at the high school? For instance, in welding or in foods in some of those cases, at least situationally. So there's definitely some plans in place for when the time is right to be able to move that next strata of students back into an in-person setting. We've looked extensively at alternating schedules at all three of the levels. The reason item two has a line through it there is, A, I wanted people to know that we have been looking dutifully at every alternating day schedule you can imagine. And it's simply not possible for us to do K-12. And I could go into great detail, but we did reach out to staff and do a one-question survey that got quite a response. And we would not have enough staff to run an elementary alternating day schedule based on people's ability to access leaves for their own childcare and other situations. So a longer story there, but we could do an alternating day schedule, if you look at number three there, for students grade six through 12. And, and both administrations in those buildings have a few different options that would work best for them and at the same time, be consistent for families with students in the same building. And then we have multiple variations of what that could look like if we had all K-five students back in the buildings, whether that's a strict cohorting model, or at least as strict as we think it can be. Or options galore under those as well. So depending on what direction you're going tonight, I mean, I guess I could prove evidence that it's all like here for you. But significant pros and cons, and obviously, I just want to keep putting out there. I, I think what would certainly be easiest, the most well-known to everyone involved, and perhaps provide the greatest sense of comfort is to be able to get back to where we started in September. Even though we were only in session for a relatively small number of days, that became unknown for people. And I think that's definitely, you know, what it is that we're trying to get back to. If, if the trend is downward enough, that is not off the table as being a possibility, even potentially based on, on when the board decides that that's an appropriate way to go. So we have, as I mentioned, a number of different options within those that will be at the ready when the time is right. I'm going to skip ahead here. Again, I wasn't quite sure where the board was going to go this evening. An additional request though is. An additional request, though, is for you to have some discussion and take some action on interior facilities usage. At your last meeting, as you well remember, there was an agreement or a motion made to allow for non-district use of indoor facilities. It was also moved that it would be cost neutral to the district. That users, non-district users would be paying for the extra maintenance and custodial costs related to keeping those facilities clean to the new standards required by COVID. And that's what we've done. So there have been some questions since that time about A. Now that the pandemic is worse than it was a month ago. Are you still wanting people that are non-district groups using indoor facilities over the next month or whatever the case might be? And if not, for how long, whether that's again to the next December meeting? Or if you do want to continue having non-districts, I have a couple of questions for you there. The first one is if facilities need to be cleaned prior to each user or use, then who is it that you would like to pay for those cleaning costs? And to be more explicit, it's not unusual for one of our gymnasiums to have two or three or four different users on the course of a weekend or a weekend day. And we need some clarity as to whether there's an expectation that when group A uses our facilities, it's then cleaned by our maintenance and custodial staff to the standard the first group came into it. Before it's used by the next group and so forth throughout the day or the weekend or whatever that timeframe is. Or if facilities do not need to be cleaned prior to each user or use, but perhaps at the day's end, we need some assistance as to how and who pays for those cleaning costs. And the reason this is an issue, as you can imagine, is that the addendum to the facilities use application has numbers in it that are bigger than I think what people were anticipating. And what I would tell you is that they're legitimate numbers. If anything, they're on the side of being conservative as to what staffing and material costs are. It doesn't make them comfortable whatsoever. So that's really, I think, where some of this is coming from is does the district want to subsidize the cost of facilities use for outside groups or not? This isn't money that we're collecting to have. This is the money that is used to offset the additional time and equipment and material goods for the cleaning. So again, is the board wanting our indoor facilities used by non-district groups over, say, the course of the next month? And then if so, we need to talk a little bit about, does it get cleaned after every use? And then if not, how is it that it's being paid for split? Administratively, things get very complicated very, very quickly. This sounds cut and dried, I think, for people who don't take care of these logistics, but it gets very complicated.
I have a real hard time personally, as much as I was for this prior to the last three weeks, I have a hard time. Saying it's kind of like say as I say, not as I do, or do as I say, not as I do, but. You know. My opinion is, I'm of the opinion that it's, it doesn't make sense necessarily, though it. I mean, I understand we want to get out, we want to do things, we've got to do things like, I get it, I really want to be able to provide that place. But we also have to understand that we can't subsidize that necessarily because then we'll have to deal with that when it comes to referendum. And we can't expect necessarily every organization to be able to afford this cleaning because they're not one of the three biggest employers in the city, you know, and we are. So I mean, it is a, it's another hornet's nest we've got to poke our heads in. So.
I guess I think, I mean, I'm struggling with this one too because.
Do you want to like give, you know, community access, stuff like that, even if they're responsible for paying? And I guess we can see if we have to talk about that more, but I think I've heard an argument or a criticism, which I believe is valid of. You know, why let other people use our facilities when our own kids aren't using them, right? So and we can argue, we've argued about whether that's the case or whatever moving forward, but. I feel like if there's undue burden on the district, just to be able to administrate this, given the fact that we're in a bad spot and there's a little bit of a conflict, in my opinion. I mean, I don't want to say people can't come, but I think it makes sense to remove that for the time being and revisit it.
So this has been one I've been somewhat passionate about over, you know, over the last couple of weeks here. I've been in the gyms quite frequently since this has been going out. I think that the, it's being used and I believe that it's being used with caution with, you know, it's been maybe what, not even two weeks, I believe that that's been open in about two weeks. And I think what we're gonna be forcing at that point, what we're forcing, if the gyms aren't gonna be open, I have a hard time thinking that the individuals using the gym are just gonna find somewhere else to go. And if we're just not, if we're not gonna, then we're spreading them further and I don't know if we're doing any good then. Right? So, yeah, I know of people, many people going, they're going to Waukesha, they're going to other areas. That's not necessarily where we want our people to be going. And I know, you know, when I've been in the gym, it's been, you know, very well done, it's been respectfully done. And the last thing the groups want is to have the gym shut down. So as far as abiding by the rules and guidelines, temperatures in and out, you know, all that stuff. That's been done very well, but my concern is if we say if we close these facilities down, it's not like this is gonna go away. They're gonna find somewhere else to go. And then at that point, wherever they're going is gonna have far less concern over the health of our Fort Atkinson residents and kids and students than what we will have. So that's, you know, it's a fine line. I heard about as well, like, so we're not opening the schools, but we're gonna let them play sports, but you know, in my eyes, that's where this is different. Where, you know, we're giving the option of virtual and if we decide to shut our facilities down, it's gonna happen, they're gonna be going everywhere else in the state but Fort Atkinson. And that's where I get really concerned about it.
Is the concern, Dr. Abbott, about, I guess, billing? You're saying if four groups use the same facility in a day, theoretically, you could split the costs somehow, or is it, what's the?
Well, I think the first, I think the first question is level of expectation of cleanliness. So I mean, the facility needs to be returned to what our standard of cleaning is for our own use. And I think we need some clarity as to, maybe four is an extreme number, but let's say there's three different groups using a gym on a Saturday. You know, is the thought that that facility is cleaned before each group uses it? So a group uses it on a Saturday morning, does that facility get cleaned again before the one o'clock group comes in or not? And if it's not going to be cleaned, then, you know, we need a little direction as to how that is, who's paying the bill, I suppose, at the end of the day.
I mean, I know the answer to this, but everybody's signing waivers saying, I understand the risk, blah, 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 right? I mean, these are all people that are choosing to be there. So I mean, I guess my thought would be is, you know, if it costs a hundred dollars to clean a gym thoroughly, we do it once a day and if somebody wants to use it, you know, you basically tell them you're on the hook for up to a hundred dollars and if other people use it the same day, we're gonna split it between you equally.
So to play devil's, so to play devil's advocate there, just because we will be asked, so. So everyone should work towards getting that first time slot if they want the facility cleaned.
That would probably be ideal.
Yeah, and really, I mean that respectfully because that is a question that has come up.
Right.
So and I'm fine however, we just need to know how to administer.
I mean, I guess if somebody wanted to use it late in the day and they weren't comfortable with it and they were willing to pay more to have it cleaned before. I mean, I don't think anything would be off the table unless it just creates a nightmare for you guys to make it work, you know?
That's what we're trying to avoid.
Trying to avoid nightmares.
Building usage is complex and difficult, more so than I think people recognize anyway and, you know, especially now. And really, we've always been very, I say this from 20 odd years in a building principal seat, very, very generous with district facilities and minimizing costs and expense to the point where it's more about who does get charged than who doesn't. And so I think that alone is uncomfortable to people right now because there is a cost associated with it. I think initially there was a sense that we were sort of making money on it or it was inflated. Those are actual costs, so. And it, there's no sales there, you're welcome to do whatever it is you would like. But if that's not going to be offset to the facility user, that's going to become a district expense just because that is what it is.
What would you say out of all, like, is the bigger the area, the harder to, you know, I'm talking about time. I guess cost probably reflects that, huh? So like the gym or the auditorium would be, I'm just thinking about from a time standpoint?
It's people as well as material goods and some of the supplies and things that we're using specifically for COVID are more expensive and certainly more difficult to get right now, but those expenses are just more. So, you know, Mr. Carter, our director of buildings and grounds, I mean, it's really worked it down to what is the cost per application of things? So.
Is it like a, I mean, just, does it take 20 minutes? Does it take an hour and a half? Does it take, how long does it take to thoroughly do something like this? Just, is that, is that a prohibitive consideration where?
Well, I don't, I don't know that I can give you the number of hours, but the costs reflect what the, what the people hours would be with the material goods as well.
Prior to COVID. So think back along the time, right? Who, so the school district would basically cover this. Did we have any outside groups that were paying fees to the school district for cleaning or anything?
If you, if you look at the policy, there are certain groups of individuals that would pay for-profit groups or non-student groups, those types of things. I would contend that we've been fairly lax on non-district tournaments and those types of things where facilities are being used, where sums of money are being made on events, you know, more on the for-profit side than subsidizing a youth activity. So I mean, there's been some nuances there perhaps over the last few years. But generally, if you look at the policy, if you're local, if you're student centered, if you're not-for-profit, I mean, those all fall into essentially no pay categories. And situationally, we would assign custodial time based on the type of activity, the extent of use, facility needs, those types of things. But typically, say for a Saturday morning gym, I mean, those maintenance costs were sort of absorbed into the regular cleaning of the building.
And did it, if somebody, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get a grasp on numbers. If somebody tried to use the facility prior to COVID, were they cleaned once on the weekend or was it every night?
On the regular, on the regular cleaning schedule for the most part. So for instance, I'll use an example of the middle school is after a weekend of gym use, if there was significant use on a Saturday, we would have people come in and get things ready to turn it over. Or we would have somebody come in to turn things over prior to the next school day just because of the way schedules and people work, like, you know, you want to get back on cycle as you're heading into an in-session week. So again, it sort of depends on the level of use and type of use.
Right. I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I kind of have some mixed feelings. The cost, I get it, it's a lot, it's COVID and we do have to do extra cleaning. I wonder if the school district as part of our showing our community, our support could pick up a portion of those costs, but also have those groups still contribute, still, like if they want to use them, they're also putting money into this. We do need to have them cleaned. If, I don't know if once a day is enough, maybe it is. I, I don't know, but I think it would be good for us to think a little bit about if a small portion of that is something the school district could do as goodwill. You know, for outside community users coming in. I don't know what that is, but it sounds like the school district in the past has picked up some of those costs. So I think that we should think about that.
Number one, if we should be using facilities and kind of work our way down?
Yeah.
It's a good suggestion.
I guess I think, I think Corey, you made a good point about if not here, then where? I mean, it's not ideal, it's, you could argue it's hypocritical, but you know, we're dealing with stuff here. So I'm not, I guess I'm not inclined to change course on that as far as not letting people in. But we gotta figure out who and how and how many, how often. Does anybody else think we should reverse course here?
So there would be no action needed if that's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to heed Governor Evers' advice and try to. As much as I don't want to do this shelter in place at home, I mean, I haven't gone out and done anything since March. I know that the people at Patty's are getting by okay that I haven't been there since March, but I mean, it's things like this that we have to give up. I mean, it was my, it's my social outlet, you know, my kid's baseball team is practicing, but he doesn't feel, and I've we've tried everything we can to get him to go, he doesn't feel comfortable, which is super strange. He's a kid that gets into all kinds of trouble, but he's just worried about getting sick. So, I mean, I don't know, I just, I don't.
There's no right answer to it.
I don't really, I mean, honestly, I don't feel like I have the expertise to decide if we need to be cleaning in between each use. I mean, certainly some people might want that for their own group of people, but you know.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but as a former wrestler, it is imperative that facilities be cleaned. All it takes is one shoe, errant shoe on a mat and five kids on the team have ringworm. Now, I don't know the communicability of COVID, but.
But that's probably being done by wrestling right now, right? I mean, presumably so, right?
Yeah, I mean, eventually a use.
I guess, yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not, I can't picture what exactly all kinds of use we're gonna be dealing with here, if it's like.
It's packed all the time. When I got into this with the admin, I was just, and you probably were too, I cannot believe how busy. But then I think back to like when my wife first started here and we went to like a, like a like a community fair there where there was like a job fair and then later there was a basketball tournament and there was a wrestling tournament. That was, that was three things in one day.
No, I mean, like what's happening now? What are people trying to do now? I mean, it's, obviously if someone's, you know, there's a bunch of wrestlers rolling around on the floor, yeah, okay, probably gotta clean that, right? But if someone is having a choir practice or a band, I mean, I don't know, there's probably different degrees of what are we using it for, you know, and I don't want to try to overly complicate this, but I think either we just make everybody pay for when they come, clean it up after you leave. We say once a day and if you want to use it, here's the line you gotta sign at the bottom of the waiver. I don't think making it overly complicated is gonna help anybody.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody's gonna not want to come because it's one way or the other, I honestly have no idea here. People are dying to get out and do stuff and this is their only outlet for it. You know, what else are they gonna do?
If it snowed, they could go snowshoeing.
Well, I think the other side of that is an expectation and level of cleanliness of the public building that you're making available. So I don't know that that's the opposite of what you're describing, but I, you know, I mean, I think that that is the difference. There's a difference between whether or not the trash was taken out by the gym door versus whether surfaces were wiped down or those types of things, which isn't me advocating, I'm just saying that, you know, that's the other side of that argument. that's the other side of that argument, I think.
I mean, I think, and, you know, without, you know, I think the most of the usage is during practices is what we're talking about, right? Like, I think that's the biggest piece of it, when it's getting used, it's getting used for practices.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, the bleachers, the, you know, the, basically, the floor is getting used, you know, I mean, we're like, I, I don't, I don't think we're expecting to, you know, cleaning the bleachers and all things like that, it's, I mean, right now, there's, as we, as we have it now, there's no adults except for coaches and, you know, players there.
Yeah, I guess are we, like, are we walking around with a Ghostbuster suit, like, you know, fog in the room, or what's that?
Yeah, yes, yes, we have a foggy suit.
Yeah, that's exactly, that's exactly what we're doing.
Yeah. So, is, you know, does that need to happen in between each group coming in and out?
I think, I think that's kind of what we.
I'm asking you.
Yeah, I think that's kind of what we've, we've said, but, so, without belaboring the point, do we want to change our direction on facility usage, or do we want to just stay the course, kind of like toss that olive branch out to the community?
I guess is the current, I mean, it doesn't sound like we're gonna take that opportunity away from people, is it currently set up that everybody who uses a facility pays this fee to have it cleaned after they're done?
Currently, that's the way it's been rolled out, I mean, and that's, that's why we need clarity. Just and to, for ultimate clarity, Mr. Nickram, I believe when we talked last month, we were careful to say that we were not entertaining tournaments for excessive amounts of adults beyond the, the youth use, is that the way you remember it as well?
Yeah.
Okay. I did ask a number of other districts today as we were quizzing them about their mode of instruction as to what they're doing with facilities uses, and most of them were not allowing, which is neither here nor there, but one was very specific about groups of adults and, and tournaments, so.
I guess I would be in favor of holding this course and revisiting it every time we meet, and then if we see something, a light at the end of some tunnel, maybe we can reduce or, reduce the amount of cleanings or the cost or something like that.
So, then I need to know, if that's the case, then I need to know if you want it cleaned between users.
Is that how it's currently structured?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we should just stay the course.
Oh, yes, I'd be in favor of staying the course there.
So, currently, right now, it's, so, Group A's in, clean, Group B's in, clean, versus right now.
Yeah. Which we can make modifications, I, I mean, this isn't about what I want, I am just trying to let you know what the, what the issues and questions are when you.
I guess it would be nice to know, honestly, if, if that causes an undue burden for groups who say, you know, "I really want to come in here and use the space, but we can't pay $100 a day."
I think that's exactly.
That's, that's exactly what it is, yeah.
And, and that's kind of why I was asking about what we did before, 'cause I think it would be fair for, if I'm sitting and want to bring my kid to a practice, to say, "Well, before, the school helped with some of this, like, I'm willing to help to pitch in to make this happen, but can you guys also help us out like you used to?"
Yeah.
I think it's something to consider. I, I personally feel like we should be cleaning between, I don't know to the extent, but I, I think that we should be cleaning in between. If we're making it, that happen for our regular school kids that are doing different activities, we should require that of outside groups as well.
I think this, in, in my eyes, I think this really comes down to, you know, there's a difference of practices or tournaments or something like that, and the, the, you know, basically, when you're using it, it's $105 bucks per day that it's getting used, and I, and I will tell you based on my experience, I think that is cost prohibitive for many groups out there. And I, I think we will see less facility uses because of that, at $105. And I, I don't have great answers, other than, I mean, I, I would think that, you know, treating a practice different than hosting games and a whole bunch of adults coming in is far different than, you know, that, and that, and that's kind of the way it's built right now, and, and I think I was most passionate about this, it's, without a doubt, if, if it's gonna be $105 a day, like, some of these things will simply just not happen. And if, you know, that's where we want to go, like, you know, to me, I think, you know, there's, again, we're gonna have people leaving because of those costs.
So, what I'm hearing is acceptable for facilities use, cleaning in between users? Yes?
Yes.
Do we have a, a feel for the number of users, you know, call it instances, whatever you want to say, like, how many groups, how many days a week, and how many places? I mean, is it $10,000 worth of fees, or is it, you know, $1,000 worth of fees a week?
This isn't, I mean, just to be really clear, this isn't a, these numbers are what it costs the district to do the work.
I'm just curious, like, if we wanted to subsidize 50% of this, is it gonna cost us?
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
$1,000 a week or $10,000?
There'd really be no way of knowing.
Right.
I, you know.
And do we have Jason squeeze some, some, move some beans around to help do this?
Well, I, I think he's been pruning the money tree.
Yeah, I think he's.
It is getting cold out.
$100 to clean a, to clean a facility is pretty inexpensive. I work in children's gym, and we charge more than that.
Could we try for, until our next board meeting, to see if we subsidize half, how the users are, what the users are, how much it's costing the district? I, I know this is frustrating.
Well, it's, it's, it's time-intensive for other of your employees to execute all of this, so.
Okay.
It does, I mean, I'm not trying to be dramatic, but this, this does take a lot of office people's and custodials and other people's time to, like, administrate this part of the organization. So, yes, the answer is absolutely, we can. I'm just not, I just want to be careful about what seems like an easy request and how hard that is to actually, you know, get, get down to the.
Well, I think if we don't do something for people, then they might just stop coming, and we'll never know what they're doing, right? So, there's gotta be a way we can do it, like, some kind of evaluation period, you know? 'Cause I mean, I would, I would be in favor of us subsidizing, but we need to have some concept of what that actually is for the.
Well, the, the less it costs, the more it's going to be used, I think, you know, that's part of what the discussion was. So, you know, if you don't, so at this cost, your data is going to be different than what the cost were half, then the data is going to be different than the cost is none than the data is. So, I'm not trying to be like a Buick salesman, but, you know.
No, I know.
But it's, it's a little slippery to try to project what those expenses might be for the district.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying do a trial run, see how it goes, if it's, and maybe at the next meeting, we can see how many groups actually took advantage of it, how many groups, you know, paid half the fee, and consider from there if, if that's a cost that we're willing to keep going through or not for the rest of the winter.
Mark, are you wanting a motion on that?
Um, I was not looking for a motion. I mean, I think what we need to do is just kind of.
I'd, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that the district subsidizes cleaning fees at 50% moving forward and revisit at each meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion. We, and then we just take a look at this a little bit further, I'm sure with, you know, Josh, or, you know, who, who's ever involved, just, you know, take a look at this and really kind of provide some more information rather than, you know, like, what goes into this so we have a better understanding, 'cause I have no idea as far as cleaning, like, how much does that cost, like, the chemicals involved and things like that, just so we have a better idea and understanding of it. I think that would help a lot.
It, it's this number.
Yeah, I mean, I think they, they gave us that and the number, and like.
It, it is this, I mean, that's the work that they did going into it, is what is the employee cost and what is the material goods cost.
Sure. So, it's just a matter of whether or not we want to.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just, I'm trying to say the well is dry as far as additional information on what it is.
Right.
This is, this is the.
Can you guys just keep a relatively close count of what happens in the next month? Or just?
It is, I, selfishly, I'd prefer that the motion wasn't that we report every month on this, but I think we definitely can take a look at it and.
I think if we see what's going on after one month, it'll give us a pretty good idea of what, you know.
Yeah, that's fine, so continue on with motion then.
Okay, so we, so we have a, we have a motion for, to continue with facility usage, however the district then will subsidize 50, 50% of the fee?
Uh, yeah, now second that.
So, I have a motion by Mr. Paul, a second by Mrs. Sneeden, and that'll be a roll call. Right, Dr. Abbott?
It, it would. Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneeden?
Aye.
Mr. Nickram?
Hi.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. T.
Without knowing how much that's gonna cost, I'm gonna have to say no. I hate to be that guy, but it still passes.
And at the risk of horrible redundancy with cleaning between each group.
Yeah.
We'd be, we can definitely have it for you at the next meeting, so.
Thank you.
Use ebbs and flows a little bit, but I think we'll have a greater sense, and we can pull some information from past years' use and that type of thing as well. I think we're at the same spot as to depth and breadth of the information you're asking for, so. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Abbott.
Oh, yes.
Good job, guys.
The, the last thing, if I can, related to school reopening is, for tonight, is inclement weather procedures for this school year. I think we've heard of lots of other districts making decisions, given various learning formats, as to what things would look like if we, when we, I suppose, hit spells of cold or of significant snow. This is where our thinking is right now, is that certainly during the winter months, we'd be encouraging students and staff to take computers and other materials home with them in the evening. Generally speaking, there's a sense of impending doom when weather is coming, but certainly as we have kids back in person, that will be part of that habit-building, is devices going back and forth with students. If we were in an all-virtual learning environment, as we are now, during inclement weather, virtual learning would continue without interruption regardless of the weather. So, if we're virtual, like we were today, and we have a horrible blizzard tomorrow morning, virtual learning would continue on as it has in the past. If in-person, if we are in an in-person and mirrored learning format as we started the school year during inclement weather, there's a couple of different things, and I think just based on the weather, we'll have to play it as we go, but, A, when advanced warning of the weather is possible, virtual learning with the established virtual schedule will be engaged, so people are able to get what they need, they're ramped up and ready to go for the next day, and then if we're in-person, we would resume our virtual-only schedule. Or, when advanced warning of weather is not possible, asynchronous activities may be available for students, and then teachers would be using that day for preparation and other schoolwork. So, that would be the more traditional snow-day event, when there wasn't necessarily time to get things pulled together. We were expecting two inches and we got 12, or there was some other situation where people weren't legitimately able to be up and running like they'd need to for virtual instruction. Sort of the grinchy part of the meeting, I guess.
Yeah.
I think we've all are clear that we, we, we all really desperately want kids back in schools, and I, I think what we are seeing is mitigation strategies when employed do work in schools, and they do work in communities as well. Masks and distancing and choices are really huge, and I guess if I'm allowed, just my, my parting thought is that our forecasting model has shown us more hope than it has in the past, that the descent from where we are could be as rapid as the ascent was, which was not always the belief. And truly, we all have control of when the inversion happens and when we are able to get it trending downward to a point where we can talk about all of those bullets that we have laid out as options for you, when it, it seems right for the board. And that is the conclusion of the school reopening portion of the evening.
Thank you much, thank you very much, Dr. Abbott, for that presentation. We will now go ahead and move on to school safety drills, is that correct? Are we gonna do this, uh, I'm sorry.
No.
WASB.
Yep.
So, we have the WASB conference coming up in January, there's also a pertinent training or like, what would you call that, roundtable-type discussion on December 1st, which is a webinar for public health, school nurses, superintendents, and school boards, December 1st, that's.
Oh, yeah, I sent that to you, that's, that was a new offering that, that may be of interest. It's, it's at 5:00 in the afternoon, but that's an interesting collection of people on that particular call, so that might be interesting to, to sit in, just 'cause the discourse might be somewhat different. I also have some information from the Dane County Equity Group, of which we are a, a member, that there is a, a board sort of discussion table on those topics coming up in December that we'll get that to you, should you be interested as well. And, and I know some of you have been participating in WASB activities and simply connect with Mrs. Haas, and she'd be happy to get you registered, and hopefully all the logins work and everything else, so.
All right. Anything else for legislative advocacy, WASB or CISA?
No.
All right, we'll move on forward to, are we doing strategic planning or not?
Yes, yep, so items for future meetings.
Oh, yeah.
We will be touching based on a strategic plan potentially in December. We're going to be adjusting some timelines for our, our prior plans that we explained just to fit our current needs. School safety drills report, that's required by statute. We will have a report on the certified staff Google certification requirement, that I've mentioned a couple of different times now. The deadline for that requirement to be met is in April of 2021, and there's been a, a number of different offerings and supports in place for our certified staff over the course of the past two years to make that requirement, so we'll be sharing some information with the board on that. We'll also receive a report on our financial projections, which is all of high interest to us, certainly. Approval of 4K provider contracts, an audit report approval. Once again, we'll get an election timeline review, and I'm guessing we'll have some personnel issues to, to add to that agenda as well.
All right, thank you for the heads up there, Dr. Abbott, and we are now, have arrived at the final motion of the evening.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education adjourn.
A motion by Mr. Nickram, seconded by Mr. Paul, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, guys, it's 8:36, have a good night, thank you very much, it was a good meeting.